Okay, folks, it's 6:00 PM and I'm calling the regularly scheduled meeting of the Common Council to order. Today is Tuesday, January 14th, 2005. It's 6:00 PM and we are in the council chambers of the city of Platteville. And we'll start with roll call, Nicola.
Thank you. Tom Knoll.
Here.
Lynn Parrott.
Here.
Kathy Kopp.
Here.
Todd Casper is excused. Bob Dos.
Here.
Bob Gates.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Here.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please indicate if you want separate discussion or action. The first are the council minutes from December 10th, regular meeting, payment of bills. We have the preliminary financial report from December, appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight I have three. I'll be appointing Caleb. Did you take my paper?
I'm sorry. I thought you gave it to me.
I can't pronounce his last name without my paper. Now you can't find it either, huh? No, I had it. Okay, Caleb, I'm going to call it Rogoli. To the Airport Commission for a three-year term ending November 1st, 2027. To the Plan Commission, Eileen Nichols for a term ending May 1, 2026. And Rick Anderson to a three-year term on the Plan Commission ending May 1st, 2027. Additional things in your packet were licenses. Licenses for one- and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol. A change of agent for the Class B combination beer and alcohol license for hearted drug. At 180 West Main Street, the new agent is John Gebhard. Taxi driver licenses is in your packet and the taxi vehicle licenses in your packet. I would take a motion on the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, Nicola will vote.
Knoll.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Kopp.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Okay, next on our agenda are citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. To start this, I am going to invite Kathy Kopp to go to the podium. And I'm going to invite Doug McKinley, our chief, to join her there. For, yeah, I want you to go there and somebody has a plaque. And Kathy's going to talk about it because she's on the Police and Fire Commission. So she gets to talk about it and we're going to have a presentation after she has a few words.
Nice deflect, Barb.
The best defense is a great offense.
Yes, yes. I am proud to say that I am a member of the Platteville Police and Fire Commission. And especially proud, at our last meeting, chief informed us that they received their accreditation for their second three-year accreditation program through the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group. It is a mouthful and I asked Doug to come with some of his personnel to inform us all how big a deal this is and how proud we are.
Thank you very much. Did a little research and with the accreditation out of about, depends on where you Google it, but probably over 500 law enforcement agencies in Wisconsin, seven to eight percent are accredited. And what's accreditation mean? It means that your PD is, or law enforcement agency, is deemed to be in compliance with 262 accreditation standards. And under these accreditation standards, there are about six hundred, over 600 dimensions that we have to provide ongoing proof that we, and documentation, that we meet all of those standards. What that actually means is we're in line with the best practices, state, federal law, case law throughout the state of Wisconsin. And that equates to decrease liability, increase professionalism. And my bias is that it equates, most importantly, to improve service for the community. So we're very pleased and our agency, top to bottom, people have bought into the fact that this is a good thing and it matters. So, thank you.
Well, congratulations. And are you going to go?
Kathy said she wants a picture, so want us to do a picture now? Pass. Oh, the flag. Right at the TV.
But I do, I do want to just add that being on the commission, we hear reports about, well, you know, they're going to be coming in, checking files and going through all kinds of paperwork and the stress of making sure that every T is crossed, every I is dotted, is monumental. And to say that we are proud that our department is in that elite group in the entire state of Wisconsin is pretty incredible. So, congratulations.
Okay, I've had two people then register to speak under citizens' comments. And Lana and Tom Kaywood have both registered to speak. Do you want to come together or one at a time?
I don't know if you guys have something that I gave to the people or not.
You need to speak into the microphone. Say your name and your address.
Tom Kaywood, 185 South Court, Platteville. I am here to ask that the city council take into consideration adding some sort of a time limit on political signs. Chapter 12.04, the state statute, defines what a political campaign period is. It's from the filing of a candidacy up until election day. The issue with chapter 12 is there's no penalty ascribed for what happens if someone leaves a campaign sign up after the election day. So I'm here to ask that you guys take into consideration establishing some timeframe, whether it's a state statute, for political signs. We can regulate already the size of signs, where signs can be displayed. And the court case that was brought to the attention here dealt with a case out of Arizona dealing with signage. And that court case focused solely on, now this is a Supreme Court case, Justice Thomas Rottica opinion, concurring opinion. And it was based upon a First Amendment free speech issue. The size of a sign is not a constitutional issue. How long a sign is displayed is not a constitutional issue. So the only issue at hand in this case was what the content of the sign is. It's not in question here, what the content is. Now, I provided examples throughout the state of where cities already have ordinances in effect that establish some sort of timeframe, how long it can be up and such. So Madison, it tells you the size of the sign. It tells you how many signs you could have in your yard. Now again, I'm talking about temporary signs that are not required to have a signage permit. La Crosse says during the campaign period. Marshfield also has a timeframe here. Lancaster has a timeframe on that. And so it's up to you guys, what do you want to just do to the election day? Some say five days after, some say seven days after, some say 10 days after on that. It's just, it's depending upon what you guys are focusing. Now, you already control when someone fills out a form for a sign. And I'll give a good example here of the signs that go across the street. Policy 1-5. That's the one on Southwater Street. You control the size of the sign. You control the material the sign is constructed of. And you control the period when that sign can be displayed. You also control the content of that sign on that. And generally speaking, I don't want to pick on the fire department, but always there has to be the pancake fee, specific date. That sign meets all the requirements, has a specific date. I hope you guys waive the fee for that, the fire department. But the farmer's market has a sign up, the timeframe during a farmer's market. And again, it's limited here from, I'd be April through October timeframe, or something along those lines. Now, if you also just want to get a sign permit, again, if you look here, that talks about the size of a temporary sign. Again, this is your approval. But it talks about the size of the sign when it's installed and when it's going to be removed on that. So these are things that you control. But what we're talking about here are those signs that do not require a permit. These are temporary signs on that. There are other areas of the city where you guys control how long a sign can be up. There are other areas of the city where you control the size of the sign on that. And so it's already in, you guys have the foundation for that. I'm just asking that you establish some timeframe. Once the election's over, take the signs down. We'll get ready for the next one on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can go 52 minutes, you know.
No, actually you can't.
I won't speak as long as Dr. Kaywood did. Mine will be more brief than that.
Your name and your?
Oh, I'm Lana Kaywood, 185 South Court, here in town. I'm here in solid dip that guy that just spoke. Obviously, he can read the legal briefs and he understands all that legal stuff. I'm here to ask you to consider enforcing some kind of sign, campaign sign ordinance, even the state statute, enforce that. And I'm approaching this from a member of the community. And I don't think when these election signs are allowed to stay up, it does nothing to unite this community. When it's over, it's over. The sign should be put away. And we all go on and realize we're all one group of citizens living in this community. And we should come together. It's over. And I just ask that you would consider making some kind of an ordinance that we could enforce and deal with this. Okay?
Thank you, Lana. Okay, I have no other person who has registered to speak. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which are the reports. Boards, Commission, and Committee Minutes. The Plan Commission, Todd is not here. I have nothing further to report. Police and Fire Commission, Kathy, do you have additional?
Nothing new.
Okay, Airport Commission, Bob, do you have anything?
Nothing to add.
Water and Sewer.
Nothing to add.
Community Safe Routes, Tom.
Nothing to add.
Museum Board, Tom.
Nothing to add.
Tom, you've been busy. Other reports in the packet, Water and Sewer Financial Report, the preliminary report for December, the Airport Financial Report. Again, a preliminary report for December. And then the Department Progress Reports. Any questions on any of these? Go ahead.
I'm just curious on?
Lynn, pull your microphone toward you.
Hello. I'm curious on what steps happen after we hear what they wanted, their requests about the signage? Like if that's something that goes to the, one of the department hears and they vote, so that's what happens? Okay. I just don't want them to feel like we just listened and then, you know what I'm saying? That's all.
Any other questions on Department Progress Reports? Okay, then we'll go to the next portion of our agenda, the action portion of the agenda. And the first item on our action agenda is review the bids for the property sale at 210 North Bonson Street. Joe.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so we received five bids for the sale of that property, 210 North Bonson Street. It's one of the former family advocates' properties. Just as background, that was, it's basically a duplex residential rental property that we obtained when they no longer needed the property. So we did receive five bids. All the bids were essentially to reuse the property as is. So it's not a redevelopment project for anybody. So it'd be, continue to be used as a rental, as a duplex. So there, the high bid was actually from Tyler Beers, who submitted as a land contract purchase. So the proposal is he'd pay 10% down, $17,500 at closing, pay $1,049.21 per month, essentially for five years, and then a balloon payment at the five-year period of $162,845.12. So his bid was actually for $175,000, but he kind of screwed up the math a little bit when he submitted it. But those are the actual terms that were submitted. So the second high bid was from Loffenberg and Larson Properties. And that was for a purchase price of $161,000, straight purchase. The only contingency being, you know, final walkthrough to make sure there's no major changes to the property. The other bids were stepped down from there. I included the full bid specs if you're interested. But to me, those two were obviously higher and better proposals than the rest of them. So from a bid standpoint, I would feel comfortable as far as the amount with either of those two bids. I think they're both valid bids. I do have some concerns with the land contract proposal. Just because the way it's structured, really the most of the value of that bid comes at the form of that balloon payment five years from now. So in the meantime, if we select that, we essentially turn into the bank for that property. So we would be receiving the monthly payments. We would have to put a mortgage on the property, process the payments. And then if the final payment was not submitted, we would have to act like a bank and go through a foreclosure process to get the property back. So we would be able to get the property back, but there is a process, time constraints that go with that and cost to go through that. So I do have some concerns with that. Whereas the second high bidder is, like I said, a pretty much a more straightforward purchase price, $161,000. Sign the papers and we move on. So personally, I would prefer that second option, the Loffenberg and Larson bid, just because it's a cleaner purchase and we don't have any issues with, you know, taking care of the property as far as the purchase payments and whether they're received and so forth. So that would be, my recommendation is to accept the Loffenberg and Larson Properties bid for $161,000. Any questions?
Questions?
No question. Just a comment that I agree that it makes sense to keep it cleaner and simpler.
Do we have an idea of what the closing date would be?
No, just as soon as we could get all the documents together. We'd have to have the attorney draft up a deed.
So we're thinking that this would close within a couple of months?
Sure, yes.
Will this then go on the tax roll for this year or would it not go on the tax roll because it was a nonprofit property or a city property at the beginning of the year?
Correct. Yeah, it's assessed at January 1, so then there'd be a partial. I don't think that would show up until next year.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
I move.
Go ahead.
To approve accepting the bid from Loffenberg and Larson Properties to sell the property at 210 North Bonson Street for $161,000.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Lynn to accept the Larson and Loffenberg, Loffenberg and Larson bid of 161 for $161,000 for the property at 210 North Bonson Street. Nicola will vote.
Knoll.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Kopp.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a certified survey map for the fire station. Joe.
Yes, so this is basically a housekeeping measure more than anything. So the property that we own, where the fire station is going to be located, it actually consists of multiple parcels. The O.G.A. property was actually, the entire property was acquired over the years. So there's several parcels that make up what we got from the school district. Plus, we purchased some additional properties on Adam Street. So the certified survey map would combine all of those parcels into one legal parcel where the fire station would be located. The only unique other situation with that is the CSM would provide some additional right-of-way, basically to accommodate the expanded sidewalks and an area on Lewis Street where there's parking kind of diagonal or perpendicular to the street that's partially in the right-of-way and partially not. So that would clean up that situation. Otherwise, you know, the lot meets all of our ordinance requirements. So staff would recommend approval of the CSM. Any questions?
Okay, questions on the CSM for the properties? Several properties that are being combined. We own all of them to form one property for the fire facility. Questions? Okay, I would take a motion.
I move to approve the certified survey map as presented.
I'll second. A motion by Ken, second by Kathy, to approve the certified survey map as presented. Nicola will vote.
Knoll.
Yes.
Parrott.
Yes.
Kopp.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that's the end of our action items for tonight. Tonight, we'll move on to our information and discussion items. The first is of which is a planned unit development amendment for 1015 Elm Street. Joe.
Thank you. Yeah, so this is the LSP and Management Property Park Place Assisted Living. So back in 2006, they received approval as a planned unit development when they converted that property from the old hospital site to the current facility, which consists of Alzheimer's Memory Care Building, a frail elderly assisted living facility, geriatric psychiatric unit, and the elderly independent living apartment building. So there's kind of four main compartments. So their proposal is they'd like to expand the assisted living portion of that building. So that would be the building that's closest to Camp Street on the south side. So they'd like to do an addition onto that building. Technically, it's two additions. They'd add 7,700 square feet to the east towards Smith Park and then a 5,900 square foot expansion to the west towards Elm Street. So both of these areas are currently grass, so there'd be no impacts on any other components of that facility. But it would increase the housing units in that building by 13. So it'd bring a total to 39 for the assisted living portion of that building. And then there would be some additional minor changes to the shared dining, the activity areas and storage areas to accommodate that addition as well. But no changes to the access to the parking or other components of that site. And I did include, you know, the building drawings, design, and so forth. So essentially, from an appearance standpoint, it would be a continuation of what the existing building looks like. So they would follow that theme. So otherwise, it seems pretty straightforward. So this will be on for action at the next meeting. And also, the Plan Commission did consider this and recommended approval. Any questions?
Any questions?
Is this the one that would be a room and house?
No, this is at the old hospital site, Ken.
Okay.
Okay, so it's the planned unit development. So that was, this is adding on to both wings of the assisted living center at the old hospital site.
Joe, when are they thinking about construction if approved?
As far as I'm aware, they're looking at a spring construction project.
Is that going to cause any problems with Elm Street or Camp?
Not that I'm aware of because since the existing building, their utilities are coming off of what they've already have on the site.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, I suspect they'll have a couple reps here at the next meeting. Do you expect that, Joe?
I haven't been in touch with them, but I'll reach out to them.
Yeah, reach out, let them know. Okay, next, we'll have the Platteville Aquatic Recreation Subcommittee's final report and recommendations. And I'm inviting to the podium Bob Gates, who chaired the PARs committee, and also Debbie Sigworth, who is the chair of our Parks Recreation and Forestry, or Parks, Forestry, and Recreation. I'm never sure of the order. But I will invite them to the podium. You have, council members have in front of you a PowerPoint that is blue, basically. And I know that Bob is going to attach his computer and it will soon, that same thing will soon be on the screen in front of you or on the big screen on the south wall.
Okay, and let's hope this works. Otherwise, we have a 65-page paper report.
I have a question.
Ken.
I received this tonight and then?
Probably the same one that's in there.
At home, I received this. Are these both the same?
Yes, they are. Yeah, I printed the paper copy before I knew that it was going to be included in the packet.
Okay.
And for people listening at home, there is an actual report embedded in the council packet that contains information we'll be focusing on here. But it also includes all of the reports that the different companies who did the borings did, has GIS photos, and answers to frequently asked questions for topics that are not going to be covered here. The main things that we're going to talk about here are the current condition of the PFAC, Platteville Family Aquatic Center, the pool, the history of it, the community's opinion and desires for future aquatic recreation. And that's mainly based on the survey that we presented. Potential sites for the aquatic facility and the viability of those sites. And then we have some recommendations that we'll be presenting right at the very end. As far as the pool history goes, going back to council minutes from 2023, it was shown that the pool right now was built in 1996. And there were a lot of other ideas floated around and opinions that the pool had been built in the early 1900s. But this pool was actually completely, completely built new in 1996. The vessel, everything was dug out and replaced. Looking at water usage records, water leakage occurred in 2014. Pretty significant leakage. And that was addressed throughout the years, but it wasn't completely fixed until 2023. And that's when Burbak Aquatic did a full water integrity study. And then Riccio Incorporated, which is a pool construction firm, did all of the improvements and changes. Last year in May, I'm sure everybody remembers, there was significant damage in the pool. And that occurred- And that occurred when the pool was filled. And the weight of the water pushed the vessel down. There was a gap under the vessel between the bottom of the vessel and the soil. And that led to significant cracking and delamination of the joints. The wall started leaning forward and there was a lot of crack. Um, Burbak and Riccio came, looked at the pool, did some analysis, and declared it inoperable. They said the vessel needed replaced, the deck, the deck equipment needed replaced, all the piping system needed replaced. And the city's insurance company hired a firm, Braun Intertech, to double check. And they did some short borings and found out there were two inches of gap between the vessel and the ground. So they confirmed what Burbak and Riccio thought. Um, this is kind of, these are photos of the damage, so you can see they were on the walls. They were inside the wall. That's the core surface, there's a crack there, the shell was scraped, and you can see the walls actually leaning in toward the pool. And that was actually affecting the pool deck too. The seams between the concrete where people could walk and, and sit, um, those expanded as well. Everything was moving toward the pool. At that point, um, Platteville, the Parks and Rec Committee um, formed a subcommittee to look into the future of aquatic recreation in Platteville. And the subcommittee was a, it's a volunteer committee, people applied and were selected by Parks and Rec. It has eleven members, and of those members, there's some pretty qualified people on it. There are three engineers, a finance person, um, a grant writer, people who have been um, involved with the pool for quite a long time and were pretty, pretty passionate about it. City manager Langrec and Parks and Rec director Lau also sat in on these meetings in an advisory capacity. And we've met every two weeks since August, so essentially five months. The main responsibilities that we were given were to engage with the community to find out what people actually want as far as aquatic recreation goes. Um, to assess the current location, other options as well, and see if the current location is still buildable. And then present con, a concept for an aquatic center to Parks and Rec, and then we've also presented it to city council. Actually, the first thing we did was contact a lot of local municipalities that have built pools in the last ten years to find out what they did. And uh, there are a lot of differences, but also a lot of commonalities. Um, the cities were responsible for the pool in all cases. They included community members generally in some sort of ad hoc committee, kind of like ours, PARs is what we call it. They um, you know, built outdoor facilities that accommodated a lot of different activities and ages, and the funding was basically through borrowing and supplemented through I guess donations and grants. But the thing that we were most focused on was finding out what the community wanted. So we came up with a survey, and the survey, we um, had a website people could go to with that U R L. We had a Q R code and our members designed this flyer. And the flyer was presented in social media, the city's website, Parks and Rec's Facebook page, in the newspaper, a lot of the businesses in town that people frequent. And it went out in the city's water and sewer bill. It went out in the paper version, and it also went out in the electric version, electronic, digital version. And I think that the results really speak for themselves. Um, we had over fourteen hundred respondents. And when you look at the people who are getting the water and sewer bill, there are around thirty-two hundred who get paper, about a thousand get the digital. And so that's thirty-five percent of forty-two hundred. And those um, survey results were released in social media, um, in the newspaper, on our website, and um, people had a lot of access to that. The, these are, I think, the most significant findings from the survey. One question was asked about the importance of outdoor aquatic recreation in town. And you can see the ninety-two percent agreed either strongly or somewhat that it is very important. Four percent felt like it was not important, and three percent were neutral on that. As for the use frequency, we asked that because if people think it's important but don't use it, doesn't mean, it doesn't make sense to have a pool. And looking at this, um, says eighteen once a month, well, eleven percent never. And you can see at the bottom what people chose. And so seventy-two percent said they would use it at least once a week. And then as far as what activities they would like to do in the pool, these are the results we got. And what I think this shows is that a wide range of ages would use the pool. Um, swim lessons are generally young hit, you know, the lap swimming tends to be adults, swim team. Apparently, water aerobics and water walking are older adults. So a lot of people in the community would use it, it wouldn't just be kids. And as far as the features they requested, water slides, diving boards were at the top of the list, um, recreation zero depth, a lot of different things. And I guess I'll go off topic a little bit. I, I know a lot of people wanted indoor pools, and, and I can understand that. These features are hard to put in an indoor pool without making it very large, almost like Wisconsin Dell's large. And there are some pools, and I know someone had mentioned a pool in Iowa that contains quite a few of these, and, and I called that place. They have a few lap lanes, and then it curves around to like a zero depth. But the, the problem with that, even if people were to use it in the summer, is that you can't do a lot of things at the same time as other things. I mean, their lap lanes were the same spot in the pool that the three to five foot range is. So people could not be playing there while people are swimming laps, so they couldn't be doing water aerobics or water walking. And um, so that's one of the reasons that we felt like an outdoor pool is important. As far as the pool size goes, most people felt that the current size is adequate. Twenty-three percent felt that it was too small. You know, we are trying to do what the community wants, but um, we're also trying to save money. And to build a larger pool than we have now would, would naturally cost more money. So we were looking pretty heavily at the seventy-three percent who thought it was adequate. Um, not many people felt that it was too big. And then one thing that I thought was very, I guess, encouraging as far as the question about whether people would pay taxes to have a new aquatic center, most people, not, the majority said they would. Um, you can see thirty-two percent strongly agreed, twenty-two and a half somewhat agreed. And then there were about nineteen percent who strongly disagreed, and then th- there were people who were neutral. I guess, given the fact that we've been building a lot of other projects in the last few years, city, city-wise, um, the fact that over half the people were willing and interested in paying more taxes to get a pool was encouraging. And so we knew that people wanted a pool, and the next thing we looked at was the location for the pool. And we were considering the current site and five other sites that were either city-owned or could be purchased, that were large enough to have a parking lot and a pool. Two of those were eliminated right away because they were earmarked for other uses. And then we evaluated the four remaining spots by location, elevation changes and the costs that would go along with moving dirt, putting and retaining walls, um, current uses for those areas right now, proximity is to parks and schools, and um, the convenience and safety of getting to that site. And the sites we looked at, this is the G I S map where the the yellow circle with the red perimeter is the current pool. And the number one spot, that's the former Claire property that the city purchased. But that was purchased with money that was earmarked for, um, for housing. Number two is Mound View, and Mound View does have trails that are used by bikers and hikers, so that would eliminate part of that. It's also across from Parities, and depending on the day and the direction of the wind, that's not always great. Um, three is a community park, and that's on Fairfield. And right now, it's used for soccer. So if a pool were there, we'd have to have a new place for the soccer. And the neighborhood already has some concerns about parking and traffic right there. Number four is a miner's field, you might know it where pit sled, the U W P banned practices, but it's between Hickory and Washington. And it turns out that is actually owned by the U W system, and it was given to the U W system with stipulation that it could never be developed. So that wasn't an option either. Five is Westview, and that would have been behind the tennis courts where there's currently um, frisbee golf. And it's also pretty far west, so it wouldn't be as good for kids to get to. Um, so we decided on the current location, but there were a lot of concerns about whether a pool could be supported by the ground there, and based on what it has pool. So um, well, I guess the current location, the reason we picked that is it is centrally located, and a big plus is it's near Smith Park and the new inclusive playground. So families can do two things, you know, some kids could go to the pool, the other kids play at the park, they could make a day of it. Um, it's at Legion Park, so if kids are playing ball, their siblings could go to the pool. And as far as being close to the middle school, that's good because the middle school has always used the pool for their summer school activities. And summer school is always held at the middle school. Plus, it didn't require a lot of excavation. And um, main benefit is that we can use the existing structures. You know, if the slide is still usable, we can use that, can use the parking lot, we can use the um, bathhouse, the mechanical building, and there were concerns about the bathhouse. Um, some people were worried that it might not be accessible for everybody. But when we're doing this, they would update the inside of the bathhouse so it is A D A compliant. We'd be mainly using the outside structure and then redoing the inside. As far as the viability of the site and whether it can hold a pool, um, we hired Chosen Valley Testing, which is the same, um, same firm that with, the city has hired for the fire station. And they did eight twenty-five foot borings. What Braun Intertech had done were just a matter of inches, so these were actually going deep. And what they found was that the site will work for a pool. But interestingly, they also found that one of the reasons for the collapse of the current pool was that when it was built in nineteen ninety-six, they didn't use the correct fill. They were putting in some dirty silt sand where they should have used clean gravel. And um, there is some dirt in spots where it might be, need to be removed and put, uh, have the appropriate fill put there usable site. And so based on the survey, um, these borings, the studies about the locations, we came up with three options. And all options are at Sylvia Street at the current site. The main difference is features. And the first option, and they're all similar in size to what exists right now. The first option uses the existing structures. The second option has a new slide and also a hundred thousand dollar um, stipend for new features. And the third one is basically everything is new. Uh, new mechanical building, new bathhouse, and that gets prohibitively expensive. So what we are recommending is option A. And this is a simpler version of that other sheet. And you can see at the top, there are two prices, and they're five hundred thousand dollars apart. The lower price would have been had we moved ahead without having a referendum, hired someone right away, and just gotten to it. The higher price is the um, added cost of waiting a year with inflation. So um, the person that is kind of the pool engineer on our committee did some cost analysis and came up with a six thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars for about the, the estimate.
Six million.
Six million, yeah, six hundred, that'd be great. Almost seven thousand, million dollars for optioning. And so what we've recommended is to use the pool, the current site of the pool, build something similar in size, similar amenities to what we have, and then reusing the slide, bathhouse, parking lot, and mechanical buildings if they're structurally possible to use. And to do this, um, we are having an advisory referendum. And some of the places that we had called had referenda, some did not. Um, but we felt that, given the, the fact that the city has had a lot of projects recently, it's important to do this. And it's a way that the city is, the taxpayers are more included in a more formal manner than just a survey. It is an advisory referendum, so it's intended to find the uh, I guess, gauge the opinion of the electorate to see what people in town want. And the date of the April twenty-fifth election was selected because there are no elections in August or October in two thousand and twenty-five. So if it were not this April, it would be April two thousand and twenty-six, which not only would delay the building of a pool a year. As far as the tax impact goes, that's kind of, that's probably the main question that I've been asked. And we um, contracted with L R S, the city's financial advisors, to see what the tax impact would be over twenty years. And they figured using a general obligation note with an um, interest rate of four and a half percent, this is what it would be. And it's hard to see, but this is based on a home valued at three hundred thousand dollars. First year starts at a hundred and seventy-five dollars for the year in taxes, and it goes down until twenty forty-seven, and it's seventy-six dollars. And if you were to look at that buy home values, that three hundred thousand dollar average is a hundred and twenty dollars a year, ten dollars a month. A two hundred thousand dollar home would be a hundred and seventeen, decreasing to fifty. And so an average of eighty a year, six dollars and sixty-seven cents a month. And a house of a hundred and fifty thousand, eighty-seven to thirty-eight, averaging sixty dollars and five dollars a month. And according to the U S Census Bureau Quick Facts, the median value of a housing unit in Platteville is one hundred and eighty-six thousand nine hundred. Now, it's using figures from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-three. So figure twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six, probably going to be around two hundred thousand dollars for the median value, which would put us in that hundred and seventeen decreasing to fifty dollar a year tax impact, or six dollars and sixty-seven dollars a month. And um, that's pretty much it. The, as far as PARs goes, um, city manager Langrec put it out in his weekly, ours has dissolved. Um, we were asked to do just this, and so we've done what we were asked. And um, a lot of the committee members are going to stay on as more of a um, support the pool kind of private group. And um, but as far as the group connected to the city's Parks and Rec Department, that doesn't, that won't.
Okay, questions of Bob? First of all, Bob, thank you for the report. Uh, Deb, thank you for your uh, participation in helping to assemble this committee. I mean, I think it's a real testament to the volunteers from the community who came together and uh, meeting twice a month since August is, is never a fun kind of activity. But uh, you certainly completed what we had requested in terms of, if you want to call it your charter or your, your mission or what you were asked to do. So we thank you and thank the remainder of your committee for all of your diligence. Now, questions here? Ken?
Uh, you've not covered this, but you mentioned about it. Um, my major is in soil science, and so you use the word soil, words as the engineer. They use the term soil to refer to a breathe, rock and so forth that you're going to bring in, in the future? Maybe you didn't cover this with them. So what I'm getting at is, we have an area here that is high in limestone. Limestone is very fractured, and it has underlying spaces. For example, if you went to the Cave of the Mountains, you could travel underground there and see the spaces in those limestone deposits. So here we have the same thing, basically, limestone underneath. So how are we going to do this as far as bringing in enough material? And will that material be uh, made up of concrete eventually? How, I'm, I'm curious as to what you're, they're going to do here. Because there's so much, there's so much breakup of limestone material below us here. We go down, for example, for water, eight We go down, for example, for water, 800 to 900 feet. So we get low enough to get our drinking water. So we go through a lot of different deposits going down. So how are you gonna, how did they tell you how they're going to do this to make this strong? And, and so, so basically, they said to us that the water went away and it settled.
Correct, correct.
So how, how are they going to do this?
Well, one of the reasons water went away and it settled was the, I don't want to throw them under the bus, but the builders didn't use, didn't follow the engineers' directions. They put, they put the wrong fill in.
What was the direction?
It was to put in, I mean, have you read the Chosen Valley te- testing report?
But this whole thing?
Okay, that report, it, it explained that. And they used silt sand instead of the gravel. And also, when they went down the 25 feet, they weren't hitting limestone. And I can give you the full report. That was a summary. The full report's about 20 pages, and I'll send it to you. But they didn't hit the limestone, and Bob had asked what, you know, what about things deeper than 25 feet? And they said, built a lot of pools, and the 25-feet analysis was sufficient.
Material?
Not, not much, not much new material. They will have to bring in some fill. Any construction project like this does. And then they said there is some loseo clay or less clay under the, the, the freeze line that they felt had maybe more moisture in it than it should, and that can be removed, it can be dehydrated, or they could put in something else. But that was below the frost line. And I'll get you the whole report. I think you'll find it interesting.
Is the whole, Bobby, is the whole report on, the whole report is on, online?
Yeah, and I provided it prior.
Yeah.
You had asked for it, Barb, and I haven't tried it before. And we can provide it again, absolutely.
Yeah. Right.
Debbie, anywhere in town?
Okay, any other questions?
Just have to comment, Bob. Your committee and everything did an excellent job putting this together and working so hard on it. I think we owe the city and the council owes you a great deed of gratitude. So thank you very much.
And there are a lot of people that worked on it. We were lucky to get some young guys who knew their stuff.
I also want to comment on that. I was part of the group. I didn't, I had other commitments, so I wasn't able to make all the meetings. But it is significant to note, not only did we end up with a, what I consider a very thorough professional report, but it's quicker than what we dubbed because initially we said we wanted to have it by the end of February. And it is now the middle of January, and it's all done. So.
And a lot of that goes to a couple guys that we didn't even know who got on the committee and got after it.
That's very good. And I would say the other thing that's going on right now, thank you, you guys can move. This kind of goes to the next agenda item, which is request for proposals. Because right now, we have an RFP out for, for a, for the schematic pool drawings. So Clint, do you want to speak to the RFPs that we have out, starting with the one about the pool?
Yes, I can, ma'am. So we have, at the time of publication of the staff summary, we had two RFPs out, looking for, the first one with the pool was for architectural and engineering designs for a replacement aquatic center. It was intended that the city will engage with a architect engineer in developing a schematic drawing of a replacement facility with estimated schematic budget in preparation for the referendum in April. And it's very important that we understand this is a schematic level. The, the city is not jumping the gun and going into a full engineering kind of draft-up thing as if we're not taking into consideration referendum questions and those types of things. The whole point and purpose of this is to arrive at essentially a schematic drawing, so at the time of the referendum and, and the community making their choice, they have a picture concept of what it looks like and an estimated cost of what they're going to be able to get that for. Further planning and detailed engineering would not commence until we were satisfied with a referendum that was presented to you folks. And again, that's an advisory referendum. And then it is your decision then if we want to continue going forward with a full design and continue on to the process. The, we received multiple responses to this RFP on January 10th, and we're currently under the process of reviewing those. We plan on meeting as a panel tomorrow. And I've got, I think, five members that are going to be giving advice to myself on what they think is a good idea to, who should be potentially brought in for interviews. And the same panel then will sit in on interviews and make recommendations to myself of who we should award a contract to, and I will bring that recommendation then to you folks for approval. The other project that is currently out there, and this one is still open, is February 3rd closes. We have planned services. It is intended that we have a revised comprehensive plan that will help the city identify community goals along with strategic initiatives for the common council, a neighborhood plan for the Trailview development, a comprehensive park plan update, so that we are main, we're maintaining compliance with the DNR grant to receive DNR grant supports. So it is a comprehensive plan-based package that includes neighborhood plan for what we're calling the Trailview Development, and that is the Claire properties that you folks are familiar with. Comprehensive component, and then a strategic planning session for you folks to, to align that. And then as a alternate bid, then we also have the Parks Plan, Comprehensive City Parks Plan. And we're hoping to bring in several different, several different proposals for that. We have engaged with multiple folks, I believe, Joe, that have called in with questions about that and anticipating that we're going to have a selection quilt to work ourselves through. And that is all found off the Platteville org page, RFPs. You can find that off the main page dropdown underneath. One second here. Underneath City Hall dropdown, our bids and RFPs on the right column of that dropdown. Madam President.
Okay, I just wanted to highlight the fact that we do have a couple of RFPs out. Often we, the question is, how does, how, how do we come to these decisions? Well, these decisions are not, are not made, presented at one meeting, and the next meeting we all, I mean, these are long processes and often involve a lot of professional firms and advice. So just highlighting that.
Yes, and I would say too that you, as a city here and as a common council, you do due diligence and looking into this for contracted services, you don't necessarily have to go through these elaborate types of processes, but to make sure that you're soliciting out for the best product, best value for your taxpayers, we engage through a very thorough process.
Okay, Bob, anything?
There's one thing I'd like to add that I hadn't included in the, the report. And, you know, a lot of people have asked about fundraising and grant, grants for the pool. The grant writer that we had on the committee did look into grants, and it turns out there are not a whole lot of grants that are available for projects such as swimming pools. The type of grant that we got for the fire station is not something that would be available for the pool. And as far as fundraising goes, that's going to happen, you know, depending on the referendum, fundraising committee would be formed. And what, like, some pool engineers have said, generally, the way fundraising works at pools is the pool will be done through a borrow. And a lot of the fundraising has specific goals, like a new slide, a new bathhouse, something where people can get behind, okay, we're donating for this specific amenity. And so even if, you know, we were able to get this, get this general obligation note, and it covers most of the pool, fundraising can take care of other things. And it could be, you know, making a nicer bathhouse than we would have otherwise had, or new pools, new amenities, things like that. Thank you.
Okay, folks, well, we're at the end of our agenda, and so I would take the motion that we need so that we can all go home.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Bob to adjourn. Nicola will vote.
No.
Yes.
Parrot.
Yes.
Cop.
Yes.
Dos.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Killian.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.